Okay, I've got 5:30. I'm going to would and call this meeting into session. I'd like to start off with the non-see Commissioner Castillo who will be providing our invitation to this afternoon.
Thank you for recognizing Pastor Edgery and what said will be giving your vacation tonight. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, city officials, commissioners, people of Harlingen. If you can bow your heads as we pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name, for these dedicated men and women that are committed to see this city change and to grow. We pray that you bestow upon them wisdom and knowledge and counsel and might, Lord. And Father, I thank you this week as we celebrate the first responders, Lord, that you would be with this great city, that it would be known for peace and prosperity and unity. I want you to use this first day as business of order, Lord, for the goodness and the well for this city. We thank you for all that you're about to do in this city, in Jesus' name we pray, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join us in the invitation.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First item on the agenda is a public announcement of events.
Good evening, City Council. I want to give you a brief update of the upcoming events for Harlingen. On Saturday, May 18th, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., we have the Blues on the Hill. This is the reschedule for the Blues on the Hill that was canceled due to rain this past weekend. Our headliner is Eric Kesmer along with Hilda Lamas and we have the Leah Holt Band. Again, that's at McKelvey Park from 7:00 to 11:00. On Saturday, May 18th, the summer registration for the city's summer programs begins at Long Sea Hill at 9:00 a.m. On Monday, May 27th, there will be a memorial ceremony at the Veterans Memorial at Penleton Park. That is from 7:45 to 8:15 a.m. On Sunday, June 9th, just for girls' duathlon, it's a bike run at the Harlingen Soccer Complex. On Saturday, June 15th, is the next series of Blues on the Hill at McKelvey Park from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Thank you for those announcements. Were there any other public announcements that anybody would like to make at this time? If not, moving forward to item two, we've got a couple of presentations of proclamations. One, Salvation Army Week. We can get Guy and Dolores Watts to come forward. George, you got it? Okay, Watts, appreciate you coming up. We just have a proclamation and...
This is Miss Essman. She's dressed like one of the old timers in Salvation Army with the bonnet and everything.
Some of us may not recognize that uniform, but we definitely recognize that uniform. Everybody knows that the Salvation Army is a benefit to the community, to the nation, an outstanding community service volunteer has his best. So today, we are happy to proclaim as Salvation Army Week. Salvation Army Week. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. This is from the office of the mayor. Whereas the Salvation Army's only business in its community of Harlingen, Texas, as everywhere, is still human business undertaken with joy for the fans against humankind to the greater glory of God. And whereas through sound, innovative, and professional services, the Salvation Army serves the people of Cameron County with unshakable faith and awe, no matter how desperate the situation and use of people with possibilities. And whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all the residents of our community and to meet human needs in his name without discrimination. Now therefore I, Robert Leffler, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Harlingen, do proclaim the period of May 13th to May 17th, 2003, as Salvation Army Week. And I urge all citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who mind up the brokenhearted and renew the heart of our community by their quiet service of compassion. I think that it serves a round of applause.
Well, this week we're having, at the office, at 201 East Monroe and at the thrift store on Jackson Street, we're having Kool-Aid and cookies that we're making available. So come on by and do some shopping and have some Kool-Aid and cookies.
Do you want to go to the... Okay, this sign is ready to go. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got one more proclamation, motorcycle safety and awareness month. Bob Keenan and others, if you can, as we come on up. Again, we have another proclamation from the office of the mayor, and this is motorcycle safety and awareness month. So we begin, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are rudely unprotected and therefore prone to injury or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas impacting health in form riders and motors alike on motorcycle safety to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and both of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all to put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and giving the operator the respect on the road they deserve. Now therefore I, Robert Leffler, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Harlingen, Texas, and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community.
Basically with motorcyclists, like bicyclists, we don't present a big presence on the highway. So we ask you just to look twice if you look left and right, maybe do it one more time. It won't be a surprise to you or us.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is approval minutes from the special meeting of March 27th, 2013. Do we have any modifications or changes recommended?
Make a motion to second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item four, consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we're going to list all four of them, four A, B, C, D?
The four A, item four A, B, C, if somebody wants to take one out. Okay, we got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That's the agenda. Okay, item number five, consider and take action to accept project bids and award contract for phase five of the Buchanan Hayes and Industry Project under bid number 2013-10.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. As approved in the one-year action plan for the City of Harlingen, CDVG program, City Harlingen solicited bids for our drainage improvement project consisting of 1,543 feet of storm drain. A total of seven companies submitted their bids. The lowest bidder was FJW Construction Company, Staffordlin's approval of award, and the amount of $4,005.18.
I had one question. What's the timeline for completion of this project?
I think we gave him 60 days.
Is that part of the contractor agreement with him?
Yes.
I'm curious, $4,518, that's not much.
I'm sorry, $405,000.
Okay. Man, we're saving money. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion on that.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? None, motion carries. Item six, consider and take action to authorize the city manager to sign a letter in support of the Harlingen San Bonito MPO's designation of a direct recipient for section 5307 funds.
Mayor Pro Tem members of the council, this signing was approved by the MPO policy designating the Development Council as a recipient of the 5307 funds. Those are transit funds that are used to operate the mobile bus systems that we have here in Harlingen. They have been recipients of the funds since the program started, so Staffordlin approved.
Do we have a motion? So move. Second. We got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? None, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take action to authorize the city manager to enter into an advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for maintenance of the landscape areas along the US 7783 interchange, expressway 77 and Spur 54.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. This is the updated AFA with TechDOT for maintenance of the landscape areas along the expressway 77, Spur 54, and the high-speed interchange. Staff is going to recommend approval of this. The maintenance areas are separated into three sections. Maintenance area number one starts, could you go back one please? Starts on Wilson Road and goes all the way down to Lincoln and extends to the west all the way to Lewis Lane. That area will be maintained mowed once a month and twice a month with letter pickup. Next maintenance area, Spur 54 from the expressway to the west all the way to Lewis Lane. That area will be maintained mowed once a month and with once a month's letter pickup. Excellent. Maintenance area number three starts at our city limits on the north side, all the way down to Wilson Road, picks up again on Lincoln, goes south to Waven Road, and that area will also be mowed once a month with once a month's letter pickup. The cost of the contract, the contract will be supervised by TechDOT, not by the city. They will issue the contract, they will supervise the contractor. The contracts were $146,875.32 for a two-year period. That makes our annual payments to TechDOT of $73,437.66. We have budgeted that amount, and staff is recommending approval.
How is this different than the last agreement?
We took out the palm tree term from the contract. We're going to issue that contract ourselves on an as-dated basis. And we also took out the, could you go back to maintenance area number one, please? That hashed area is the area on Dixieland where the retaining walls at, that's the area that we landscaped here about a few months ago with Harlingen Brown. That area is not included in this agreement either. We took that out. We have a separate agreement with a contractor for that, it's about $1,800 a year. It saved us about $6,000 taking that out of the contract. Now, the previous contract that we have with TechDOT only had the expressway and Spur 54 being mowed nine times a year. This one is monthly. So I think we'll do a better job keeping it clean and keeping it nice for our visitors.
Sounds like we negotiated a good plan with them. Any more questions?
Well, I'd just like to make the comment, I think we should also let everybody be aware that the railroad track that is in part of this area is not included.
It does include.
That way if somebody sees it, wants to know like I did, why is it not being mowed? I think we should at least explain that, how that works for the commission.
The state right-of-way only goes so far. The railroad owns 100 feet along the frontage road. They are responsible for maintaining that. When the area gets overgrown, our court enforcement officers issue them a notice to mow, and they have to mow it.
Okay, any more questions? We have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. We've got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
And like sign, any opposed? None, motion carries? Next in, good job on that. Okay, next item, public hearing, considering ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow in a built business tattoo studio in a general retail district located at 1801 South 77 Sunshine Strip, guarantee legal description of block 5-8, block 1, Arroyo State Subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a tattoo studio on the existing 1,200 foot suite that's located in the J.D. Colton Plaza, also known as the China Star Plaza. This is the existing suite here, it's 1,200 square feet. You can see to the south of it is the China Star Restaurant, and then to the north of it is a vacant suite which is previously used as Bloomer's Flower Shop, and prior to that it was a Feldman's Liquor Store. This request is located on the North Side of 77 Sunshine Strip, just west of Ed Carey Drive. The hours of operation for this establishment will be from Monday through Saturday from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. It will be closing Sunday. The Departments of Building Inspections, Fire Prevention, Health, and Police Department reviewed the request and reported no objections to the specific use permit. Public hearing was conducted at the P&amp;Z Commission at the May meeting. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner are recommending approval subject to the applicant complying with proper state permits and compliance of departments administered by the Planning, Fire, Building, and Health Department and Police Department. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, do. Why is a tattoo shop considered an adult business, and is that particular to Harlingen or is that a state law?
It's, well, per the ordinance, it's classified as an adult business because it's a business where its products or services are restricted to people over the age of 21, so that in this case it requires a consent for 21 years of age, so that's why it requires a specific use permit.
As far as the business itself, they're going to do, from what I read, they're going to be doing tattoos and piercings, and they'll also be selling some jewelry?
Right.
No other products?
Correct.
Okay, this S U P does require a public hearing, so at this point I'm going to open the public hearing up. If there's anybody that would like to speak for or against this item, you may do so at this time. Please approach the podium and announcer. I mean, none. I will close the public hearing and move on to the action items. A and B, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific use permits, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding, zombie ordinance, ordinance number 07-27 of the City of Harlingen, to issue a specific use permit to Roberto Zareta to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail GR district located at 1801 South 77 Sunshine Strip, guarantee legal description of lots 5 through 8, block 1, Arroyo State Subdivision, subject to one, obtaining and maintaining the proper permits from the city and the state, and two, complying with requirements administered by the Planning, Building Inspections, Fire Prevention of Police Departments, and writing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion there.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries? Okay, item nine, consider and take action to approve resolution that, one, authorizes review of Texas Gas Services Service Company's TGS cost of service adjustment tariff, two, approve the joint review of TGS application along with other cities served by TGS, three, hours of legal and consulting service to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, and four, require TGS to reimburse all reasonable costs associated with cities' efforts, the cities' efforts in this remaking effort. And I believe that's your item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Every year when the Texas Gas Service Company wants to increase its service rate, it's required to actually allow the cities to review, negotiate, and protest any increase in rates. So for as long as I've been here, the 34 cities in the valley have gathered together cohesively, and they assign their negotiation efforts and review to a specific law firm. It has continued to be Jeffrey Gay with Lloyd, Goslin, Rochelle, and Townsend P.C. Again, the cities have gathered together and have asked that same attorney be assigned to continue negotiating. Once the negotiations have ceased and there is cohesiveness in the rate, the rate will come back to the City Commission for approval. The cost associated with that attorney in negotiating any of those rates is not burdened by the city, it is actually reimbursed and paid for by Texas Gas Service.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? So move. Second. Second, okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Like sign, opposed? Motion carries? Item 10, board appointments?
No, Mayor Pro Tem?
None, I have none. None, no board appointments, we'll move on. Item 11, citizen communication. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Who do we have?
First one is Joe Rubio, 2009, San Diego.
Mayor Pro Tem, bear with me a second before we start the clock. I've got a set of three pictures I would like to deliver to Mr. Bigfendy, I guess. I won't be able to pick it up. Thank you.
For the record, I'm a Osseto Lee Junior, went through San Diego, Texas. I've just given Mr. Bigfendy three pictures. Two of the pictures are reverse to Ranger Road Park. There's a lot of water that collects where that park needs a lot of maintenance. I think it's ridiculous that kids, me and Officer, me and Commissioner Sanchez went by there and there was kids playing in the water. I think it's high time that we start looking into our, to the maintenance of our parks, especially when the mayor announced that there was $2.5 million more built up in the reserves. I think this is rather ridiculous that we allow this to happen. Also, the tables that are out there are in very bad shape. Number two that I, the thing I want to talk about, is I want to talk about an incident. Now, I'm on the 4B Board, and I get involved in a lot of activities for the quality of life issues, and as the quality of life issues and all parks items come up, one of the items I'm trying to do is I'm trying to bring something for the retired community. I'm trying to help out the retired community because of the, especially in that park and other areas. And what I decided to do was try to form, I formed a nonprofit group, and this nonprofit group, I've been accused by Mr. Shapna and Mr. Menzies, and I'm using this nonprofit groups for profit, for me to make them money, because what I did was I threw out some boards out there, and on this boards that I threw out there, I talked to Mr. Yerena about it, and I said, "All I want to do is give you a concept, an idea of what we can do with this community." So instead of helping out and taking a look at it, I got accused of, you know, not helping out with this community, and it really bothers me that Harlingen doesn't move, and my time's almost up, but give me 20 seconds, that it's very important that we understand that this community's not going to move forward until we start addressing issues. And the mere fact that you have two city employees who harassed the crap out of me, you know, and called me and wanted me to pick up those boards with a concept that we're just screwed in, is totally ridiculous, and I think it's, I think it shows a commitment to the city, I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Next.
Next is Priscilla Alvarez with Vina.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm Priscilla Alvarez, Director of Program Services at Vina. Every year we try to do a progress report on some of the benchmarks for the investment that the city has made in its residents. Since we opened our doors in 95, our goal has always been to assist the underserved and economically disadvantaged adult population of our area. We help them attain a marketable skills certificate, an associate's, or up to a bachelor's degree in a demand occupation available here in the valley. We continue to be thankful to Harlingen for being such a huge supporter and partner of our program and the economic impact it has on, in your community. Our progress report is for this fiscal year. We did present to the EDC Board as well. This year, our benchmark for Harlingen was to serve 36 individuals, 36 Harlingen individuals. We're excited to report that by using leverage dollars, we've been able to assist 103 thus far. Upon entry to the program, into their training programs, 65% were between the ages of 25 and 50, and I'll point out that that is the hardest population to serve. 68% were below poverty level or on some type of public assistance. Thus far, the average salary for graduating participants of Vina is $30,368, and we expect that to go up by the time this fiscal year is over. That is true economic, that is a true economic impact to your community, and we just wanted to come by and say thank you for your continued support, and of course, we will do our end of the year, fiscal year, report for you when it's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Jose Palacios, 201 West Washington.
Again, my name's Jose Palacios. I own a small business in the area. I've been here since 1981. I opened up my business. I also have a second business in San Bonito. I've been struggling to self-divide 2.3 acres, which is in the EDJ area of Harlingen. I started thinking this thing was going to cost under 15 grand. Well, the process back in September ended up giving me a figure by December over $50,000. Since those 2.3 acres, I've had to self-divide them into two lots, and I brought the cost down to over $30,000. One of the major expense items is fire hydrants, which has been an issue that I've been talking to the fire chief and the fire marshal, and I've talked to other city directors about this issue, and I've issued letters to the city regarding this problem. What I want to do is self-divide those 2.3 acres and build a 13,000 square foot building there to relocate my existing business at 221 West Washington. What I'm proposing here, and I sent a letter last week, and addressed, hoping that the, I gave it to Ms. Diana Vargas, attacking her to City Commissioners and Mayor, and this is just reasons why I think that fire hydrant expense for self-divide, particularly in small self-dividers under five acres, should be paid by, from public funds. And main reasons are that fire hydrants are not first-use items for a self-divider when you build some building. He doesn't use a fire hydrant like he uses water and sewer, which I'm not opposed to running against for that. And a fire hydrant nowadays costs over $6,000. So for a small private individual or a small business like me, that represents a very high-ticket item to self-divide two acres. Just to give you an example, back in 1992, I self-divided five acres out there in San Bonito, and had a cost of $3,500. Now to self-divide 2.3 acres is costing over, into two lots. Back then, those five acres, I divided them into three lots. Now I'm self-dividing two lots, and both are freeway property, and it's costing me over $30,000 plus two lots. So I do have reasons, I don't know what other procedure to follow, so I'll come before Commissioner and Mayor, and I have, like I said, met with the fire chief. Commissioner and Mayor, and I have, like I said, met with the fire chief. They issued two fire hydrants that I think are totally unnecessary for that, to protect that area from fire, and I'd like for you guys to look into that a little bit more, and I'd like to find out what other procedure I can follow, see if we can examine and revise the code for fire hydrants, in particular two new subdivisions, which is what I'm trying to attempt. I'm trying to relocate my business, I'm trying to create new jobs, I'm trying to create more activity out in that area, exit White Ranch Road, and I'm already getting help back over seven or eight months. Thirty-two thousand dollars to spend to subdivide two point three acres and build a building is just too much. So that's what I got to say. Frankly, I'm just, I'm asking you guys that I need to do something about this, and if there's other procedures I need to follow, I would like to go ahead and undertake those other procedures. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. You understand that under citizen communication, we can't respond back to you, but the city manager will take note of your concern, and you'll get with him after the meeting. I'm sure he'll direct you to the right department head, and we can try to figure out how to help you, get maybe a waiver.
I think most small businesses and private individuals will take the effort to subdivide if they have small parcel, if it's affordable, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Commissioners.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Raymond Reyes, seven oh six, nine Turkey Drive.
Commissioners, my name's Raymond Reyes, seven oh six, nine Turkey Drive. I would first of all like to thank the Assistant Police Chief for getting ahold of me and working with me very diligently to address some concerns that I tried to make other individuals aware about, but they were too busy, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, so they handled it, or he's handling it for me, he's a man of, that knew my father, yes. I believe that he's gonna take care of the issue or look into it. He's definitely a man of integrity, so, you know, that's, I'm not even saying that's rare, but, you know, I'm glad we have somebody like that at the police, at the police station. Another thing, because I'm gone a lot, apparently there's some bickering going on because of somebody, the city attorney has some, has cancer. Well, I have cancer too. When I was nineteen, I was getting six months to live, unfortunately, or some people consider it, I'm still here. So, let her deal with her issue. There's no reason to be bickering or arguing or trying to bring somebody down. They got a job to do, they're doing it. As long as that's done, we should be good to go. We shouldn't be in any issue whatsoever. There's some other concerns that are going on that I actually requested some information under the Freedom of Information Act. I'm hoping that this information matches the information that I already have, because if it doesn't, that's just gonna be, lead to more problems. I recently submitted that request, so I guess it's gonna take like ten days or whatever I was told that the process is. So me and the individual and I have worked it, we are waiting very diligently for this information to come back. So let's go ahead and work on making Harlingen a better place. When we first moved down here from San Antonio, I thought for sure we would be way past West Look-Home Mercedes. Unfortunately, that's not the case. So let's see if we can adjust that and work together to get Harlingen going in the right direction that it should. Thank you, you all have a good evening.
No more sins.
Okay, well that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank y'all for coming.